Call me in order, please rise with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body, the city of Seward, Nebraska, Open Leads Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Leads Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. A participant's sign and sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. The presenter shall approach the podium, state their name and address for the clerk's record, and ask a limited remarks in five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary, and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Welcome.
Present.
Back here, campus.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Present.
First item this evening are the minutes of December seventeenth, twenty nineteen. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Sorry.
Motion and second, please register your votes. Please display the votes. This isn't bragging, this is the real. Item, uh, from the consent agenda, uh, consent agenda, items one through three. Move approved.
Second.
Your motion and a second, please register your votes, please display the votes. Under the confirmation of mayor appointments, uh, number one, point Jeremy Tunnies to CBD application review for economic development.
No, go for it.
Second.
Your motion and a second is approved discussion, same numbers, register your votes, please display the votes. Under public hearings, we have a public hearing scheduled for seven P M. This is an ordinance for a text amendment to the municipal code. Chapter four ten, unified land development ordinance, U L D O, article thirty-one supplemental use regulations to adjust requirements for first floor residential in central business district. Greg.
Yes, uh, this was a request that came in, uh, through our U L D O process. An item that we had been looking at in the comprehensive review of the U L D O, but also brought to us by a number of property owners in the C B D, asking for us to consider clarifying our restrictions or requirements for first floor residential. Currently, you may remember, we had adjusted this a number of years ago to essentially make way for what was the cornerstone interiors facility. And that basically allowed that if a business owner also lived on the first floor in the central business district with the business, so that it was their business, that's essentially what was allowed, um, as the giveaway on that. What we've been requested is, is looking at a way to utilize more floor space. We have a number of large buildings within downtown that are just not finding tenants that are looking for really, really large, thousand plus square foot areas, they're looking for ways to renovate those, to make more viable commercial space, and also make, you know, viable areas to use with the other portions of them, which there's this constant request to look for more and more viable downtown living. The other element of that is, as we know, is the renovation of a lot of these downtown buildings, the larger ones, to include access for A D A and handicap accessibility onto a second or third floor potentially, uh, is really hard and not cost effective, to put it in an elevator, especially if one doesn't exist. It pretty much blows the project out of the water. So the ability for those that may not be able to traverse the old staircases that we tend to find in these buildings, uh, or those with handicap accessible needs do not have a downtown living option. So by adding more accessibility to non-owner occupied downtown living, that also opens it up. And so this item came forth, uh, Jake, myself, uh, reviewed it and kind of walked and worked it up, uh, through the U L D O process. We presented it in December to the planning and zoning commission. They discussed it. Uh, I think one of our biggest concerns, we kind of looked at there was the fifty percent, if, if you walk through it, is that total floor square footage, was fifty percent too much, was it just enough? We talked about a third of the building. The reason we felt comfortable with fifty percent, and that was what ultimately gets recommended by planning and zoning commission, was that we're gonna put in thirty-three percent, and somebody's gonna come in and go, man, if I had thirty-four percent, then I'd be able to do this because my plumbing is right there. And we're like, let's just do fifty. Hopefully, they won't use all fifty percent, but fifty and that's it, there is no fifty-one percent, fifty-two. Uh, and then the other element, I believe, is that we required, um, I think it still requires the special use permit. I'll have to look through that again. Under, maybe developed under a commercial or a conditional use permit. And so we'll still have control, it'll still be reviewed by planning and zoning, it will still be reviewed by the city council. So if there are extra elements that we need to take a look at and provide as a condition of approval, you'll still have that control rather than having carte blanche ability to approve this. Again, it was heard in December by planning and zoning commission, they voted unanimously unanimously to approve this recommendation. I can answer any questions?
Questions, you know, we've talked about this a bunch now. Even with some of the other buildings, as far as they make part of the building for tenant occupancy, what about alley access? You know, are we gonna start having issues where who's determining who has right of way on the alleys? Easements, um, I know there's discussion on one building in particular right now. Are we going to get into that a little bit more? Who has the right of way on the alleys? Is it the city?
The city, the city owns the alley, the platted alley. Now again, some of our downtown buildings, every one of them is different. The other thing that we have is we have a number of buildings are also considered in the C B D, but they're not traditional downtown buildings. Free standing hotels, banks, homes. So a lot of this plays into it, that's why you really wanna look at conditional use permit as an element of this. But when, when we're considering the traditional alleyways of downtown, the main square areas of the, of the city. The platted portion, it's within usually twenty feet, right Jake? Usually you got a twenty-foot alley. Yeah, it just depends on how it was originally designed. That is in the strict control of the city. We have some buildings that don't go all the way back into their lots that will have more access than the others, more abilities to utilize that space. But the city controls it and currently as is, those alleys are for the public to traverse, so going back through and out, and for loading and unloading. That is the use of the alley. It's a public access point.
So nobody actually has jurisdiction over the alleys?
The city.
The city is only.
The city is in full control over it and determines the use of it, the direct, just like the direction of the traffic flow and everything else.
I, I mean, that's, that's great to bring that out because, you know, there's another item coming up on the planning commission on the nineteenth, or, or thirteenth, yeah?
Yep.
Yeah, so I'm glad you brought that up.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
What happens with rates? Do they go residential rates? Do they go commercial rates? Are they expected to be metered separately as far as water and?
They would be, they would be under the standard metering depending on the building that we would do traditionally. So we, I mean, especially on electric, we can divide that up pretty simply. They may be dependent on what they wanna do on water, they may just charge a, a general water rate within their lease agreement. That's probably to the determination of how they wanna divide that up.
Each individual project.
Yep.
Going back to alley.
If there's, sorry, if there are multiple tenants, we would charge it the same rate we do apartments and everything else. If there's a singular one, we may look at just doing it as a singular rate.
Now can the city control even on the access to the alley, can we, as far as cities, make jurisdiction on one ways or anything like that?
We can control the direction of traffic.
Direction of flow.
Flow.
Okay.
Obviously, like, just as we've had, uh, a discussion, for instance, at a recent, uh, board of adjustments. The, the question was, can we control the access out to the highway? For the most part, the, the state, you always wanna check, whenever you're changing something that kind of interacts with the highways, you'll wanna check, but they gave us permission to go one way, both ways, different way, they didn't care. But you always wanna check, but the direction, traffic, traffic flow. Now I will say, you'll, and Kelly would speak more to this, once somebody has an access that they're utilizing, then that's when you get into the point where, now limiting that access, like saying, no, you can't access the alley where you've accessed it for who knows how many years, that's when you're gonna get into more of a sticky situation. Where you're cutting off a use that they had and was, and so.
Greg, at that meeting, didn't it also specify the front access to the apartment as well?
Yes.
It couldn't be like through the store?
It couldn't be through the store, you're correct, uh, councilman, it can't be through the store. It will have to be some sort of offset access. It can be in the front, because right now, we also use access to apartments through the front. You'll see those side doors that go right up the stairs. So there's no, I don't think it's a detriment to the design of downtown to have a similar door styling off to the side maybe, that's just an access hallway to the rear potentially. But we don't want the frontage covered up, we want that to remain for commercial standard uses.
But you also have the risk too, is that if you're encouraging access from the front, I assume people would wanna park nearby in the front. And so if you can get the access on the backside or on, on somewhere else off the alley, then, you know, they, this parking is always a concern in downtown areas. We wanna be very cognizant that we're not creating additional parking issues. Um, although I think people would be surprised to know how many apartments are actually, are downtown, way more than what they might think. And, and we've been able to manage with that as is now, so.
Any other questions or comments on that from the council? This is a public, um, public hearing, so I will open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on this item at this time? You're welcome to come to the podium. Go along, everyone's like, it's like a classroom putting your head down. Don't make eye contact, okay. So I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing, and we turn to the council for any additional comments or questions.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Okay. An ordinance to amend the municipal code of the city of Seward, chapter four ten zoning subdivision, article thirty-one supplemental use regulations to adjust requirements for first floor residential in central business district, C B D zoning areas, to repeal all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict, to provide for an effective date to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. The ordinance has been read by title and... Lost my spot. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number twenty twenty dash one, and the title is hereby approved. Any, any motion to dispense with statutory rule?
Amen.
Sorry.
Your motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please display the votes. I think this is ordinance number twenty twenty dash one. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as ready?
Amen.
Okay.
Your motion and a second is approved discussion. Seeing none, again, the question is, your ordinance number twenty twenty dash one, you finally pass and adopt it, please register your votes, please display the votes. I believe this is our only ordinance for the evening, so I have one final motion to make the ordinance part of the permanent record.
Amen.
Second.
Your motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Alright, item number one, under administrative items, resolution amending cemetery fees. Greg?
Yes, uh, as you see, the schedule of fees included in the resolution, the adjustments. These were items that were recommended, um, by the cemetery board and reviewed and discussed. I think their main priority was just eliminating the date variations, um, on, uh, the different times at which we do burials throughout the year, and just go to a consistent, standard one across the board. Mainly because we don't have as many issues as we used to in regards to some of the, the ground conditions don't cause us with the equipment and things that we have now. And so they made those recommendations, they've also recommended an increase in the spaces. And you see those in, in the very first lines on burial space. Those rates have not been increased, uh, in recent memory, and so that's what they're going with now. That was the recommendation of cemetery board, I can try and answer any other questions you have.
Any questions or comments on?
Greg, just curious, the urn vault that's been removed? Because, uh, we can't accommodate, we don't do, it was on there, now it's not, you know anything on that one?
You know on that one, Bonnie?
I don't, I don't know if it's covered under something else, I don't remember what that was, why they thought it didn't.
These have been, these have been shared with the, the local funeral homes, because we have heard back from them. So I didn't have any, you know, obviously nobody wants to see the fees for, the services they're providing go up, but nothing specific that they called out that they needed to bring to administrations at notice or to the council, so.
To Chris's point, can we approve this if we don't know for sure on the urns? Because that is something that's more and more.
Um.
There's a question.
Hey, is there something to call real quick? Have you been charging a fee for it?
Yeah.
I was wondering, are we just removing the fee or?
Is it full?
Comedy.
It's not clear.
Yeah.
I imagine they're removing it. I thought there was some discussion about that. I can't recall what it was.
And I'm not gonna pretend to know exactly the whole process of an urn vault.
Who's assigned to the cemetery board?
Uh-oh.
Just, just wondering. Sorry.
I wasn't at the last meeting, sorry.
Why don't, who, can you call somebody?
I can either get a hold of.
Give it to Kelly to talk to him and to get clarification on that, and we'll just go on the agenda and come back once you have an answer, is that okay?
Alright.
Kelly?
Yeah, he's gonna call.
Actually Jake probably has, I think, um...
Greg, probably?
You wanna call Bob and ask real quick, and I'll take care of Doug's, Doug's item's up next. And so do you want to delay?
Yeah, we'll just move on, and then we'll come back to item number.
Bob number.
Try Bob, oh, come grab my phone.
We'll come back to item number one, let's see, get some clarification on that.
They'll answer faster if I can.
I have reviewed, reviewed street parking in the area of three hundred South Fourteenth Street, and potential for limited parking to one side. Doug?
Yep.
Welcome. You can state your name and address for the record, please.
Doug Brand, twenty-nine eighty-four Fletcher Road, Seward, Nebraska. An observation, and the city has helped me during fair week, every week, they take the street and make it, they close the east side to parking so that we can get heavy equipment and the carnival and everything through there without problems. This fall, I had two farm customers mention to me that how congested it was down there. And I know as I drive quite a bit that street, because of the region five facility, there's a lot of cars in that block and a half area right now. I'm just saying, I don't know that it's a danger hazard, but it seems like, i- instead of being a two-lane street, it is only a one-lane street during business hours, Monday through Friday. All you have to do is drive down there through business hours on Monday through Friday, and then look at it on Saturday and Sunday, it's two different streets, but, uh, it is, it is a congested area, and it's down to one lane traffic. Ironically, I was in Murray Drug today, and whatever Mrs. what she says, Doug, what are you gonna do something about that mess on Fourteenth Street? And I looked at it really sweet, yeah, get that parking thing cleaned up, so congested down there. How do you know I was going to city council tonight? But anyway, um, that's just the problem, it's just a congestion area. Uh, I don't wanna cause grief to anybody. Region five building was built as a single-family housing unit. I don't think if it was a single family living there, they'd be allowed to have traffic like that there. But, uh, I don't know if there's an easy answer, and, uh, it's just something to look at. Like I said, just drive through the weekday, then drive through the weekend, and see how crowded and congested it gets. And, um, I don't wanna cause grief for anybody, so. Just brought it up. Well, I just told the city administrator, he said I had to come to city council.
He called his bluff.
So.
Now we're glad that you came and brought this to our attention. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
Has anybody talked to any of the residents down there, if we do anything down there, what their idea is?
Our, our, our reasoning for bringing here is letting Doug come talk to you about it, asking him the specific questions. Obviously during fair time, that's a big one for them, getting implements on and off the fairgrounds.
And, and you corresponded properly.
Yep, and then, uh, we brought it to, to the traffic committee, which is myself, chief Baldwin, Jake, our street superintendent, and kind of looked at it internally. It's pretty narrow, I know Larry Ruther with the electric department, we have a facility over there on Fourteenth Street. And he said there are times during the day, they're waiting for multiple vehicles of traffic to roll through from Hughes Brothers, people coming around from using it as kind of a west wraparound bypass off of Hillcrest. It's just slightly too narrow with the amount of parking that's on there. So the hope is to remove parking potentially from one side, I think we would all agree. There's less parking going on, on the east side. So if we could remove it from the east side, we have one residence down there between the extension office and our facilities. And we, that would be the predominant one we'd be concerned about in regards to the parking issue. If they have sufficient need at their residence, uh, and then, because I think there's some, some, uh, potential handicap, people that might live there.
I think normally they have four, five vehicles around that place. And, and today, um, this, the Seward County Extension Office has opened up their new meeting room down there. And they had thirty-five people attending the meeting in that room, and it was really a disaster today, because their lot was full and that whole thing was double parked all the way down there, and, uh, it was a one-lane street, so.
So is region five have specific parking? I'm just not seeing it in my head specifically. I mean, do they have a parking area at all, or is it all?
Is it driveway?
They have some.
They have a driveway.
Yeah, it's just, it's a single-family residence, sit there and...
Well, I know when I've gone down there to go to the hardware store, you know, from our neighborhood, um, it's, it's always, it's always clogged up, especially during.
You're always waiting, you're always waiting, you're meeting somebody and you're waiting.
And it's, I can imagine, I've never been down there when Hughes gets out, but I can imagine, uh, when Hughes, either in the morning or in the afternoon, it's...
It's not a life or death thing, I just bring it up.
No, it's, it's a, it's a legitimate concern for sure.
Any other questions or comments on item number two?
Yeah, I just would like to make sure the residents, before we're making a decision, that they're a part of, you know, so they're not upset with us.
Sure.
And make a change.
Rich Bull, that will probably agree with my assessment.
Right, but I mean, even both sides.
I think what we'll do is, just because he's been down there and talked to him already, is we'll task chief Baldwin with making some contacts down there. He likes to talk to people. And, uh, we'll, we'll, chief Baldwin, continue those contacts and make direct contacts with all residents down there in the extension office, and just say, here's the intention right now of the council, they want us to find out your thoughts and comments. And then we'll bring back a resolution barring, you know, somebody throws a red flag in our way. We'll bury our resolution at a future meeting here to remove parking from one side, and then we'll see what comment we get from that as well.
Thank you, Doug, for coming.
Thanks, Doug.
Have a good day.
Are we good to go back to number one?
Are we, Jake?
Yeah.
Okay, Jake, what did you find out?
I found out that, uh,
Phone number?
Bob said that they, that's something that, um, they initially came up with, and a lot of people weren't using it. And in fact, no one had used it in a long time, that additional fee, so they just got rid of it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on item number one?
Question on that though, if, if we leave it in though, and there is that opportunity for somebody for the future, is it gonna hurt to leave it in, if somebody would want that request?
I don't, I don't know.
What is the current involvement?
Cremation.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's cremation, but I'm, I'm not sure what it is, because it's just like, uh, if, if I'm, if I'm right, because I've been to two funerals where it's like they've been cremated and you assume they're going in, like, is it the mausoleum or whatever they have at, in Lincoln. But they actually bury them in the ground in a vault made for an urn.
Oh!
So I don't know if that's what it is.
A little bigger than a shoebox.
I'm tracking with you now.
Just like they have a vault for the casket, I think it's a vault for...
We have family members that did that. So their, their urns were buried out there at the cemetery, and that would have been in the nineties.
That's, that's why, I do know of others out there as well, that's why I'm saying, I, I don't think we should be taking that opportunity away, because there has been, uh, family members in the past that are in urns.
That makes sense.
Jake, welcome back.
More of what Bob said didn't make any sense to me.
It makes sense now?
He said that this is for them to put the ashes in a piece of PVC and put that in an urn in the ground. He said no one was doing that. So I don't know if that's different than what you're thinking, how it's going to those people.
Uh, here's my recommend, here's my recommendation. I know that we didn't have anyone specifically in the room at that meeting, but we do have people on that board that have been working with the cemetery for years and years that were run funeral homes, and they unanimously made these recommendations, including Greg Zapka. And I would as, I would assume they wouldn't recommend it otherwise if they didn't. And so the other thing is, we can always bring it back if we get into a sticky situation, but I doubt we will.
Well, or you could charge them like a casket.
Yeah, there was a four hundred dollar.
Four hundred dollar PVC.
Right.
But.
I, I would trust their recommendation.
I'm giving it.
So if there's any other comments or concerns, would someone?
Introduce the resolution.
Let's introduce the resolution. Resolution has been introduced, and it's designated as resolution number twenty twenty dash one. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted? Your motion and a second, please register your votes, please display the votes. So that was number one, we had a discussion and review on number two. Number three, lease agreement with Vinnie and Sons Inventors LLC to operate a holiday light display in Centennial Park, city of Seward. Greg?
Yes, lease agreement, um, I think Vinnie's here. And so they, they came and spoke with us a number of months back, talking about opportunity, uh, for putting up a light display, similar to the one they operate now, um, near Malcolm. If you are on social media or anything, I don't know how you didn't see it somewhere in regards to the incredible display they did that was Husker themed this year out there. Uh, I think the Huskers Facebook was promoting it online and got a bunch of views. And so they're doing an incredible job of, of promoting what they're doing out there, and they wanna bring that to Seward. And so, uh, this, what this will do, the lease is set, the terms are in there. The term basically starts today, that will give, uh, Vinnie and his crew the ability to go out and start doing some underground staking and, and laying items out when it's available in time. Uh, and then we'll do our normal operations out there throughout the summer, and then come around to next year. Vinnie will have November first exclusive access to Centennial Park to control it, he'll have it locked up. We'll have things to share and everything, and then it'll be under their control to put up the holiday display for next year. And then we'll see how next year goes, and so we only wrote in the term for one year. We'll bring it back, if we really like how things are going, we may put in a automatic renewal in terms, so we don't have to do this every single year, and then we'll go from there.
Any questions or comments about the lease agreement?
Vinnie's here, if you want to.
Come on up.
Say hi.
I, I figured come tonight in case anybody had any questions or comments or curious as to what we had planned or what was gonna go on, so.
Name and address.
My, uh, Vincent Bintenger, um, thirteen two forty West Bluff Road, Malcolm.
Since you brought it up, what do you have planned?
Well, if, uh, if anybody has seen our display that we have now, um, it'll look nothing like that in any way. It'll be significantly larger, um, the plan is to, for lack of a better term, you know, with what, uh, the zoo put on in Lincoln this year, to make that look like it. That's kind of our bold statement.
Oh, they're fighting words.
Uh, I know those guys that were the brains behind all that, so it was, it's a competition there, but, uh, it, we fully intend on this being, even in year one, the largest in the state. And in year two, it will grow just as much as it did in year one, and so it will, it'll be, it'll be large.
That was my only question is, I know that the zoo did do well, um, and so I was just curious if you, you were concerned about that drawing away from you? I mean, I know it's ge, different geographic, but...
No, I, I saw it actually as a really good thing. So this is, these things have existed all around the country for a long time, um, where you pay to drive through a, a very large scale Christmas show. But it hadn't ever existed in Lincoln or in the, in the Nebraska area. So that kind of wet the market in, look, if you wanna see above and beyond Christmas lights, you're gonna pay for it. So that actually kind of lubricated the market a little bit in terms of what we wanted to do. So that was good for us. You know, this year, and I don't know what their growth potential or what their growth plans are, but they had a, you know, they... So that was good for us, um, you know, this year, and I don't know what their growth potential or what their growth plans are, but they had a, you know, they advertised two hundred and fifty thousand lights. We fully intend to be beyond half a million in year one. I'd like to see us get to a million by year two. So we, we, we wanna go big with it.
A couple of things, how did you arrive at the four thousand dollars?
That was a negotiated term between Kelly and.
Was there a specific reason for that?
And it, and it's a percentage up to.
Right, I saw that, yeah, and that's fine.
Kelly has really good arbitrary news.
Have we talked with police and fire and all those things, are we all set on potential, just have to ask.
It would be the same access issues we have now with the county fair, everything else. Obviously, we'll make sure to do our park work and coordinate with the county to make sure it's accessible in and out and safe. Vinny's crew will be in charge of traversing the interior of Centennial Park in there.
This will be driving through no horses, right? What's happening, horse drawn carriages through there, just driving?
Any, any walking?
Nope, just, just driving. Yep, purely for an insurance liability reason, we are going to instruct people, you do not get out of your car.
Perfect.
You stay in your car on the pathway al, only. Uh, and that's for wires and things like that that are straight all over the place, because they're not just power, but there's also data. So there's twice as many lines everywhere. To kind of answer your question with traffic things like that, i- if, we do have a Plan A for traffic flow and Plan B. The Plan B is if, um, where we would work with the police department on, look, this is where we see a solution, if traffic were to back up to a point that it left and it were to say reach the highway or something, obviously that's bad, we don't want that. So we do have a Plan B on how to change the flow of a recommendation for changing traffic.
Would, would people just come in and out or would they be able to kind of do a loop once they're in there since you can turn around?
Our, our official policy is that, no, you make one loop through. Now, that being said, if traffic is not backed up to where there, there isn't hurting anything, I'm not gonna stop them from making a second loop through. So there's no reason for me to stop them, then I won't. And we'll allow them to make more than one loop.
John?
Did you uh, consider, because those buildings are a lot of times booked a year in advance down there. Have you thought about other events, weddings, Christmas parties and all that extra being at both buildings, well, actually three buildings down there? Have you ever considered that in because you're gonna have traffic flow coming in? And then if you have a big event, say Hughes Brothers Christmas party, you know, are you figuring all that extra in there with the buildings and all the extra events?
Uh, which buildings is it that they're using?
Could be any of them.
Um, like the Egg Family and the Harvest Hall.
Okay, no, I, I had not.
Forest Center.
I had not looked into that, I, I will have to do that.
Yeah, because them buildings, I, they're like, they're booked a year in advance. And uh, because if there's that much flow that goes down there, so I'm just throwing that out there.
I appreciate it, I'll have to look into that.
Lot of, lot of events go on that time of year down there. Could be wedding, could be Christmas parties.
Probably can't get down Fourth Street anyway, so it doesn't really matter.
We're fixing that, right?
You're gonna have that extra congestion, you gotta.
But there are parking. I'm saying there, there's a parking spot for them.
So then what's the, a, as far as the, the logistics, so like, there, I, there's a period of time when these lights are up and they, they come down? And then, okay, so like what's the time against, how long, what's your season?
So for us, what we put in the, the contract was uh, from November first, that's when I get exclusive rights to it. But then, I, that would end by February fifteenth. Now, I'll tell you that because I don't want my controllers, electronics to be out in January and February, those are the coldest months. I don't want my equipment out there, I will get it down as quickly as possible. That being said, I stretch that from, you know, maybe January fifteenth to February because if there is snowstorms, things like that, uh, I wanna have a little bit of time freedom to make sure that we do get it down in time. So I don't wanna have to have crews out there in zero degrees and snowstorms or something, so.
And, and does yours have, um, is there like a radio frequency for, so people are in their vehicles, there's also the added benefit of being able to tune to a particular frequency to listen to music that's coordinated with the lights, so that's another reason for that?
Correct, and uh, so, and I don't know what is available in Seward, the FCC actually designates certain frequency numbers as public use. Uh, and so what we use is a shortwave radio, we stay under the legal limit and uh, we use a frequency that the FCC has designated as public use. So, and so that's the number we'll stick on in case everyone are liable to be choose ninety point five or something, it's, because that's what we're allowed to use.
Alright, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Is there a, some, entertain a motion?
I'll move to approve.
The motion is seconded, we further discussion, same note, please register your votes, please display the votes. Item four, plans and specifications for the Sixth Street Water Main Improvements Project and authorize the city to advertise for bids. Jake?
Good evening, uh, so this is a water main uh, replacement, um, along Highway fifteen. Uh, the existing line is four inch, um, we're upgrading it to a eight inch PVC line. So that will include all uh, re, retapping all service lines along, um, Highway fifteen from Lincoln to North Avenue. It also includes a twelve inch water main from Seventh Street to Fifth Street. And that's part of our overall master plan to continue a twelve inch uh, water main along Hillcrest. So that's basically all it includes, there are several fire hydrants, a majority of this uh, project will be bored. Which means it'll be, um, basically tunnelled, the pipe will be tunnelled underground rather than open cut, um, so trenched. Because there's a number of trees along Highway fifteen that we would like to avoid, not only taking them down with the root system and all that, uh, pretty well gets avoided by boring, um, majority of the line, so that's the intent. That, this is a budgeted project, uh, intended to be constructed in the, this summer. Our estimate is right at five hundred thousand, which is what we budgeted, so everything's looking good from, from the budget standpoint. I'll take any questions. The contractor will.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Move to approve the plan and specs for the project?
Motion in a second, is any further discussion, same note, please register your votes, please display the votes. Item five, plans and specifications for the twenty twenty asphalt overlay improvements project and authorize the city to advertise for bids. Jake?
Okay, so this is uh, this year's overlay project, um, it will go from Lincoln Avenue to Hillcrest on Columbia. Basically continuing where we left off last year. It will also include the entrance road, uh, at the Seward Cemetery. Essentially it will go, what they have budgeted is, is essentially twenty-two thousand dollars and that will go from the pillars at the entrance basically until the road splits at the, um, the building there, um, administrative building. So that's pretty much the extent of, of that portion of the overlay. Estimate is hundred and seventy-two thousand, which is roughly what we budgeted, so, uh, budget is in line. We'll be coordinating with Concordia, um, as well as ensuring that no construction will be happening on the third, fourth or fifth of July and everything is open for through traffic, so.
Any questions or comments for Jake?
When is it to start?
Uh, I don't have a start date, but I have a end date of August fifteenth. Which is essentially before Concordia college students start coming, coming in.
So really as soon as you can with the weather is probably when they start?
Yeah, more than likely it'll be June. Or late July. Last year was late July, this, this project will take, you know, probably two to three weeks of concrete work, all sidewalks and curbs. And then when they overlay it, it'll be two days.
Any other questions or comments? Bring in your motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Your motion to approve in a second, is any further discussion, same note, please register your votes, please display the votes. Item six, change order number one for the Waverly Road Improvement Project. Jake?
Yeah, so uh, this change order includes changing the lighting layout. We heard from the public, uh, open house that a lot of the concerns about uh, this project is how wide the, the section will be and the fact that there'll be curves, um, and obstructions on both sides. So, um, looking at that, we decided to take a look at putting all the roadway lighting and putting it on one side rather than having it alternate on Waverly Road. Because the original design had it basically alternating, um, on both sides of Waverly Road as most roadways do. And that gives you a pretty consistent, um, lighting.
Which side are they gonna be on?
It's gonna be on the south side. It'll be in between, it'll be in between, uh, the future trail and the new back curb, so there's a strip of grass there that essentially the lights will be within. This lighting layout does include a little bit larger, or basically a, a longer arm on each pole. And the poles are a little bit taller than they were initially, but that, that allows us to get the consistent lighting on the roadway that we have to meet. To uh, to accomplish the lighting that we.
It was part of the concern is from the agricultural community that there be implements that need to access that in order to get around the area and that if you have obstruction on both sides, it would have been difficult if not impossible with the width of their equipment.
Yep, so, we all know farmer equipment is getting huge these days because no one wants to be out there forever. So, and no one wants to stop and change heads on a combine and drive, drive down Waverly Road. So, basically it allows someone to, if there's someone coming at them, uh, they can opt a curb and essentially with no obstruction on the north side, go as far as they can out of the way so that traffic can flow.
So you're still gonna have the curb there, it's just the lights won't be there.
The curb will still be there and it's a standard six inch curb that can be driven up on by anything really.
But the implement can stretch farther out over that area, that gives them a little bit more ground.
If there were lights there, there would only be certain
Yeah.
areas that you could do that.
And I, and I'll be honest, that was really the only concern I heard throughout the process was from, from farmers in the area that were just concerned because if you look at the, the, how the roads are laid out in the country, there's really no other good access to get east and west, if you don't, if they can't go down there, then, I mean, where do they cut across that and it just makes it, makes it a lot more complicated, so. Yeah, so that was part of the concern and I'm glad we were able to come up with a solution. Hopefully we'll address, maybe it's not like perfect, but at least address some of those concerns to make it a workable solution.
And it's a, a no cost change order, um, cities were buying the lights and providing it to contractors, so very little change in the actual contract amount. I wanted to get this done before it was let, but things didn't work out and we wanted to push forward with the opening, the bid lighting window that we wanted to hit, so. That's why the change orders happened.
Any questions or comments for Jake on item number six? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the change order, second.
Your motion in a second, is any further discussion, same note, please register your votes, please display the votes. Item seven, change order number one for the Highway fifteen Turn Lane Improvements Project. Jake?
Yeah, so when we let this project, uh, the Turn Lane Improvement Project, the state had still needed to do their review, uh, that was in the spring of last year. So after several rounds of review and Olson revising plans, uh, we're to a point where the plans are essentially approved. So those changes that Olson made to accommodate the state's comments are now incorporated into this change order, which is a depends on how you look at it, positive change order for the city. Uh, initially they put in concrete barriers, uh, to be installed as part of this project for the traffic control. So they'll have, uh, when they start the project, they'll have a temporary signal up to allow one lane traffic to continue on Highway fifteen. Initially they had concrete barriers along, um, that portion that would be open, uh, the state is allowing us to not have those, which those are fairly expensive. So, uh, we're saving quite a bit of money on this, um, change.
Any other questions or comments for Jake?
We approve the change order.
Your motion in a second, is any further discussion, same note, please register your votes, please display the votes. Item number eight, change order number one for the Seward Community Golf Course Middle Pond Improvements Project. Jake?
Uh, yeah, so we had the, um, pond improvements project let, we approved it. As I stated, when we approved it, uh, we're, we would be looking at a change order to deduct some items out that the, um, Parks and Rec Crew could handle themselves, uh, to try to save some money and get back within budget, so that's what this is. Okay, now we'll be starting this project potentially next week and draining that pond down and getting going on excavating.
So they've got like a million golf balls at the bottom of the sink?
That'd be fun.
Of yours, a million of yours?
Chance will be when they start draining it down next week, so.
Can you tell me your initials for Tyler?
Everyone called me Tyler, that's what I'm named for. Any questions or comments for Jake on number eight?
Move to approve the change order.
Second.
Your motion in a second, is any further discussion, same note, please register your votes, please display the votes. I would make a note that this is Jake's last meeting with the City of Seward and that we appreciate all of his work and I know we, we feel like the administration that we've been able to improve a lot on the quality of our projects as well as the planning and efficiency of, I still wasn't gonna cry. Of all that, that he's brought to the city and, you know, we're very, um, very fortunate to have him with us, even though it's been for a, a relatively short period of time. But we wish you all the best in your endeavors, we hope it's terrible and you wanna come back soon. If it doesn't work out, but hey, a guy can dream, can't he? So no, again, just wanna say thank you for everything, so.
Thank you Jake.
Thanks, man.
Thank you, I really enjoyed my time.
Item number nine, resolution declaring city items as surplus. Greg?
Yes, these are predominantly street and uh, public property related items. Larger vehicles and equipment, uh, the guys in the street crew went through and kind of are looking to clean up what we refer to as the horseshoe, have a lot of equipment that's just stored down there, it's not being utilized anymore. They did go through the entire street department, building, catty corner from where we are now and the area underneath the water tower and basically just assessed and cleaned up as much as they can. Uh, and so they found these items to be, uh, items that we will not utilize anymore. Uh, we had success in the past through the electric permit and utilizing, um, uh, an auction house, now it just remiss to my head. Big Iron, that is, Big Iron, uh, and we got, uh, one of our, uh, bucket trucks that no longer had some of its capabilities anymore. We put that out on Big Iron and got substantially more than we were getting within any local southeast Nebraska market. And so we'll probably have them come in, I think they've given us some initial thoughts on our equipment and they think that we can put it up through them and get some good returns, better than we could do locally just advertising it, putting it out on websites and things like that around here, so that's what we'll look to do.
Any questions or comments?
Make your questions up there.
And you want, introduce the resolution?
Oh, sorry. I'll introduce the resolution, I didn't read that, I was.
You're just testing me, that's okay. The resolution has been introduced and it designated as resolution number twenty twenty dash two. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted? Give a motion, is there a second? Your motion in a second, please register your votes, please display the votes. Alright, under reports, we have a city manager's report.
Uh, can I answer any questions you have in regards to report, got a few new hires taken care of, so we do have a new CSO officer, correct? Chief, starting next week?
I believe so.
Thirteen, starting up, and then, uh, the Civic Center also has a new caretaker or not caretaker, but a Civic Center manager, uh, approved and on staff over there, working, doing a little bit of transition with Randy to just do everything covered. So we'll be working on that, we do still have open the street superintendent position and Jake's position, sorry, city engineer. Sorry, city engineer. And so we'll continue to look through some of the applications as those roll in and they get started on that. And so, uh, the last one is, is just an item of note that occurred today, and so we'll just update on it. Check the news, see something else. But, uh, in regards to, uh, the Carol K. project, today was the hearing with the appointed Board of Appraisers, uh, this morning at the county courthouse. And so myself and Kelly went up and attended that, and, um, ultimately, interesting process, I hadn't been involved in it before, but Kelly's done it. And so, so it was quite a learning experience, but we did meet with the appraisers along with, uh, the Homeowners Association, uh, representative and also their attorney Greg Damon, and so went through the process, kind of each presented some information to the three board members. Uh, then did go out on site, it was staked yesterday morning, so got to see it out in the field as it's staked out, and they took a look at it, and then they headed back to the courthouse and made their decision. Uh, just for your information, the decision was, uh, to recommend that the appropriate value was the amount offered by the state in Nebraska. And so that's what they signed off on and returned to the court, so. So that was the appraisal that was given by the board pursuant to our action. So that's where we're at. What ultimately happens is now that we've completed that process, it is available to go out to bid. And so it will be put out for bid by the state on, I believe, January sixteen. Is that correct?
And just so you know, there was some Facebook chatter today, and so Channel Eight apparently picked up on it, and so, um, like we did hear a call at City Hall about it, and I did do an interview after work today at Channel Eight, so you did have to look forward to.
Are you brush films, that your DVR?
Yeah. I think you're, I think you're good either way, if you miss it, I'll, I think you're all right.
I, I can answer any other questions you have. Uh, two items that have been pending, um, Councilman Singleton, your request on the levy maintenance item. Jake and I pulled the levy maintenance documents for the art, the core main levy, and we're going through that with Bob Myers, the street foreman, and selecting out the items. We don't wanna draw a seventy page document, but we're selecting out the items that we think are good contingencies for maintenance of that levy, and we'll apply it to our portion of the levy that we maintain on the other side. We just think that's a good starting point, so we'll go through that and fish that out. And then Kelly and I are working out some items for you to bring back, Councilman Campbell, in regards to annexation. And so, we just need to finalize some process, and then, um, I'll work with the mayor, I haven't done an annexation with this body before, and so we'll make sure how you proceeded with that in the past that we follow all that, so.
Is there a motion to accept the city manager's report?
I'll move.
Second, motion in a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Is there any feature requests for council agenda items or miniature action? Saying none, uh, next we have announcement of upcoming events. Jonathan?